Good evening. It is seven o'clock, and so I will call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, if you would please lead us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lees, would you do the roll call?
Mr. Ayer?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparts?
Present.
Ms. Wilds?
Present.
Madam President, you have a form.
Thank you very much. May we have approval of the Executive Session Memorandum from the meeting on June 14th?
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Executive Session Memorandum. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the minutes from our June 14th meeting.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from June 14th. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Now may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Terrific. Petitions or comments by citizens. I have received three cards, and as I shared at our last meeting, we would ask that everyone be respectful in your conversations and comments this evening. You will be limited to three minutes. The three people who are on here, I don't believe spoke at the last meeting. So if you were here and you spoke, please do not come up again unless you have new information to present or to share. And for the three people that are speaking, we ask that that be new information to share because, as we've talked about, we have lots of minutes from the Plan Commission meeting and from our last meeting that lasted three hours. And I'm anticipating that you would like to speak at the time of this topic. Correct? Yes. Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything that you would like to share this evening?
Sorry. Breathely, Madam President, thank you for the opportunity. I just remind everybody that next Monday is the Fourth of July, and we have a big celebration planned in downtown Noblesville with the parade starting at 4:30, running the normal route that every parade in Noblesville does down Logan and to Ninth Street and up Monument. And then we'll head over to Forest Park for a Fourth of July celebration featuring Hairbangers Ball, and that kicks off at 6:30 p.m. So we hope that you'll come out and enjoy a wonderful celebration of freedom, family, and fireworks in downtown Noblesville next Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Committee reports. Parks. Do we have a report from the Parks Board meeting?
Did I give that last time?
I don't believe so, but we'll pass. We'll wait till the next time. How about that? Roads Committee.
We're waiting till the next meeting.
Okay. Waste Water?
Wait till the next meeting as well. I'm sorry about that.
I should have asked you guys this before. Finance Committee. I know that the Finance Committee is met. Mr. Davis?
Actually-
Or Mr. O'Connor?
Madam President, I'll do this. Mr. Davis was out of office on that day, but Aaron Smith and I were present. Most of these items are on our agenda this evening. We have the interlocal agreement for cost sharing for the East-West Corridor, which is the White River Bridge that we're working in tandem with the county on. This is an $18 million commitment, so this is a big step towards making sure our East-West Corridor project is completed, but Alec Krupsky will comment further on this later in the meeting. Talked about a tax abatement for Patch WPB Lot A LLC, which is Washington Business Park. The committee was supportive of the abatement request, and you'll also hear more about that from Andrew Murray here, our Economic Development Director, later in the meeting. Amy Smith gave us an update on tax abatement compliance. As you might guess, a number of abatements continues to build, but we've got a much more robust system tracking. Reedy Financial is working with us on the consulting side to continue to build that, so from our perspective, long-term, it'll be easier to manage, and we'll be able to use that as a more effective tool. We reviewed the claims, but we could not move them forward for lack of a form, so we'll have to approve those this evening. But that's the report.
All right. Any questions of Mr. O'Connor?
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 34-06-22 an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 low-density single-family residential to R2 low-to-moderate-density single-family residential for approximately 40 acres south of East 191st Street, west of Pebblebrook Golf Course, and approximately 65 feet east of Moon Town Road in Noblesville Township. And we're also considering ordinance number 35-06-22 an ordinance for a change of zoning from R2 low-to-moderate-density single-family residential to R2/PD single-family residential plan development, including adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers for approximately 40 acres south of East 191st Street, west of Pebblebrook Golf Course, and approximately 650 feet east of Moon Town Road in Noblesville Township, as amended. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. As you noted, both of these items are coming together, facilitating the development of a new residential neighborhood. There are no changes on either of these except for one small change on the PD development standard regulations. They've actually increased the minimum requirement, minimum required square footage for one-story houses from 1,800 square feet up to 2,100 square feet for the homes that are along or facing the golf course. Other than that, there's no changes and no additional communication.
I do have a question for clarification. In the first item, I said it was 65 feet east of Moon Town Road, and the second time I said 650 feet.
It should be 650 of both of those.
There you go. So 650 feet for ordinance 34-06-22. Any questions of Mr. Martin? Any questions of petition? Mr. O'Connor?
Madam President, one, I just, Mr. Dabishawood and his team came all the way here, so we can't let them go without having a question. So I'm looking in here. Where does that asterisk, John, in the, what section is that in?
It's at the bottom of page two of 14.
Two.
Ordinance 33-06-22. For the record, John Dabishawood's with Nelson and Frankenberger, offices 550, Congressional Boulevard, City of Carm.
It's ordinance 35-06-22 where the amendment has been made.
Thank you.
And that covers lots one through 19 or 20?
On the site plan, it's every lot that's adjacent to the east perimeter of the real estate. So one through 19.
19, okay. Because you've got that one outlier there that's south of the roundabout, but that's, that's fine. I think that'll be a larger home anyway. Is that 20 down there?
It is number 20.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Any other questions of the petition? Mr. Dabishawood?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve previously discussed ordinance 34-06-22. Want to do these together?
No, because we have to amend.
As submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 34-06-22 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparts?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to amend ordinance number 35-06-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 35-06-22. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 35-06-22 as amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve 35-06-22 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparts?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Council to consider ordinance number 39-06-22 an ordinance for the change of zoning from R4 single-family and two-family residential to R5 multifamily residential for approximately five acres at 1255 South 16th Street. And we will also consider ordinance number 40-06-22 an ordinance for the change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential zoning district to an R5-FH/PD multifamily residential flood hazard plan development, including adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers for approximately five acres at 1255 South 16th Street. Ms. Yelton?
Good evening. As you may recall, this was introduced at your last meeting. It is the site that is directly south of the street department. They are requesting a rezoning to R5, which is multifamily with a PD overlay. Their site plan that was shown last time basically has not changed. They are proposing approximately 53 townhome units on this property that would each have three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a living space of approximately 1,400 square feet. The development will be known as the towns of Stony Creek. As you may recall, there were several waivers that were being sought, and there were some stipulations that were provided, but it was sent to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission for adoption.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Yelton?
The applicant is in the audience. Should you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Mr. O'Connor?
Well, I know Mr. Tooe is here somewhere, so probably more of a clarification than a question, but since he's here, good evening.
I'm Brian Tooe. My address is 50 South Meridian. Madam President, members of the council, thanks for hearing our case.
Mr. Tooe, the question I had, I think with respect to the project itself, when are the, when are the tax credits going, when does that go? Can you give me the timeline again?
I believe the tax credit application, they seek approval is in November.
Okay, July.
July. Yeah, the award would be in November. The construction, they believe, would start in 2023, and I think occupancy would be early 2024 is what they would look for, possibly late 2023.
Okay. So you'll know that in November. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, we'll know for sure that it's viable in November.
And the project hinges on those credits, does it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. That's all I had, Madam President.
Any other questions?
I think we covered it last meeting, but the architecture does come back in front of ARB.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Awesome.
It does.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinances number 39-06-22 and number 40-06-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinances number 39-06-22 and 40-06-22 and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparts?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is now adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 41-06-22 an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Downtown Development Fund for Levinson Garage signage and establishing a public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. My name is Steve Stricker. I'm the deputy controller in the Office of Finance and Accounting. I'm here on behalf of Jeff Spalding. I'm requesting that you hold a public hearing and consider ordinance number 41-06-22 an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Downtown Development Fund for the Levinson Garage Way Finding signage. At your June 14th meeting, Mr. O'Connor moved to introduce this ordinance, seconded by Mr. Smith. The chief financial officer and controller, Jeffrey Spalding, state this ordinance is technical in nature regarding an additional appropriation approved by the Downtown District Committee. He stated that the additional appropriation would appropriate part of the cash balance in the Downtown Development Fund that was unspent from prior years. Ms. Wilds added, each year, the council appropriates $500,000 for aesthetic downtown improvements. Mr. Peterson noted, the signs are for wayfinding and not for advertising the Levinson apartments. Mr. Smith moved to establish a public hearing for Neds number 41-06-22 at your next regular meeting, seconded by Mr. O'Connor. Nine ayes had it, and you motioned to carry it. I'm requesting that the Downtown District Committee has recommended to the mayor and to the city council that the city spent up to $90,000 for painting wayfinding signage inside the Levinson parking garage in downtown Noblesville. The request is for a nonrecurring purpose that does not increase the base budget. The request would increase Department or Subfund 016300 series expenditures, again for the amount of $90,000. Aaron Head is with me tonight if you have any detailed questions on this project.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Public hearing?
Do we have a motion?
This is a matter of public-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I need to move to open the public hearing.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I'm going to move to close the public hearing for ordinance number 41-06-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public, close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 41-06-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 41-06-22 and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparts?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New ordinance for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 42-06-22 an ordinance regarding improvements along, under, upon, and across the Midland Trace Trail right-of-way. Sarah Reed?
Moved to introduce. Second.
Good evening. Good evening. This ordinance before you is considered a supplement to the previously adopted State Road 32 overlay district brought to-
to the previously adopted State Road Thirty-two overlay district, brought to you by our planning department in twenty-twenty-one. As you all know, the development interest on the west side of Noblesville has increased, and we have seen several proposals that equate the Midland Trace Trail access and frontage to beachfront property. This interest will further be magnified as we continue to develop the trail going east over the White River and through the woods that connect to downtown and the future Nickel Plate Trail. The proposed ordinance, coupled with a State Road Thirty-two overlay district, will help ensure the protection of the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community, the Midland Trace Trail as a public resource and park asset, and the property and adjacent uses to the trail. Moving forward, you see additional approval requests of similar ordinances as a protective and proactive measure as the city continues to build and expand the Midland Trace Trail. Due to the timing, pressures, and development interest, I would respectfully ask that council waive the rules tonight and pass this ordinance on first reading. Available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Reed?
Madam President.
Mr. Eyre.
I've moved that we waive the rules and pass them first reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to waive the rules and pass this on first reading. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve ordinance number forty-two dash zero-six dash twenty-two.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number forty-two dash zero-six dash twenty-two. All those in, oh, Ms. Lees, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous item number one. Council to consider resolution RC dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. A resolution for the transfer of real property. Ms. Skroski.
Good evening, council. In front of you guys, you have a resolution for the transfer, transfer of real property to Hand. We have Andrea Davis here from Hand, and she will be coming up to give you a quick, just three-minute synopsis of what she plans to do with the project and the intent of it. But just for some background on this, early, as you all know, the Pleasant Street project has been around for a long time in conceptual stages, and it got further and further until the fine got, the design finally became more finite, finalized. And so when we got there to be proactive, the city decided to do some early acquisition. And this was really beneficial, as you've seen in the property market right now, to do this early acquisition. It has saved the city a lot of money in doing that. But as you will also recall, in two thousand nineteen, there was a historic district that was created that really moved our alignment to the north, and we had to do our best to miss this historic district and impact it as little as possible. That left us with five homes that would no longer be used for the Pleasant Street project. Because of this, Hand approached us about the idea of whether or not they could, their, their nonprofit would be beneficial in us donating those properties to them. One of the prop, five will be put back bid on the market and then resold to the highest bidder. But these four properties, we thought, were great to be able to donate to the Hand nonprofit. I'm actually, I'm going to call Andrea up here real quick. But as you all know, attainable housing is very much needed in Hamilton County and within our community right now. And I'm going to let Andrea talk about that a little more.
And if you will please state your name and your address.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
My name is Andrea Davis. My address is one-two-four-three-three Traverse Place in Fishers. I'm the executive director of Hamilton County Area Neighborhood Development Incorporated, but we go by Hand because that won't fit on a business card. We're located at three-forty-seven South Eighth Street, Suite A here in Noblesville, just a few blocks away. We're a nonprofit housing and neighborhood development organization that builds and preserves affordable housing in Indianapolis's northern suburbs. We believe that all communities need a variety of housing options in order to thrive and that those who work here should be able to live here if they want to. We were founded in two thousand and three and since then have developed nine rental communities with a total of a hundred and forty-two units that we lease to folks earning up to sixty percent of area median income. Four of those properties are located in Noblesville with a total of twenty-nine units. A tenth is coming soon in Fishers. And if you know where I can get a couple, like half a million, that would be awesome. Twenty of our Noblesville units are within a half a mile of the Pleasant Street properties. So when we saw that the city wouldn't need to demolish them, we thought this would be a really great opportunity to keep some historic worker housing available for workers. These were homes that were built in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds for workers in the industrial area there at the end of, south end of Eighth Street. And what we plan to do, we have applied for funding through the federal home investment partnership program. It's a state-administered program, and we've applied for funding that would allow us to invest about one, a little over a million dollars, rehabbing these homes, bringing them up to modern standards inside, but making the outsides, making sure the outsides retain the historic character that make the Plum Prairie Historic District worthy of being listed on the National List of Historic Places, National Register of Historic Places, sorry. I mentioned our hundred and forty-two units. We have over a hundred people on waiting lists, so we know there's a very big need for this. When Hand first started developing properties, we focused on senior properties for those fifty-five and older. But as we have continued to develop, we know there's a great need for workforce housing, especially in areas that have a lot of jobs like downtown Noblesville. In, in, in exchange for accepting the, the federal public money, we agree to keep rents below a maximum that HUD sets every year. And as I said, our, our residents can earn no more of sixty, no more than sixty percent of AMI. We hire a third-party property management company who handles leasing and also maintenance and ongoing upkeep of the properties. So we, we try to, we are active local landlords who try to, to be good neighbors. So, and just one other thing I wanted to mention. Of our four properties in Noblesville, two of them are located in three historic buildings on South Eighth Street. Hand's offices are located in one of those. In twenty-seven, those are, those were developed in twenty-eleven and twenty-fifteen, and in twenty-seventeen, we won an Indiana Landmarks Preservation Award for our efforts to, to save those homes. So we have the experience, we have the interest. Hopefully, in a couple of months, we'll have the money, and we'd really like to save these homes for future workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for what you do.
Thanks for considering.
Madam President.
Mr. Eyre.
I would move that we approve resolution RC twenty-two dash twenty-two. Subject to the closing on the property, deed would not be transferred until Hand secures the funding for the project. Project would be substantially complete on or before twelve-thirty-one of twenty-four, or the property would revert back to the city of Noblesville. Of course, we see, I'd like for them to come in once every six months, give us a report on where they are on funding. We've watched them do other projects. They've done a great job. And the goal, I think the goal that we have is that these, these properties would help lift the neighborhood up, make it a more viable area to live.
Second.
I'll second.
So it has been...
Is the attorney's okay with that wording? Just to clarify for the record, I understood the motion to be, motion to approve the resolution, but the city would hold the closing until Hand confirms receipt of the funding that was just mentioned and that the project would need to be complete by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm fine with that.
I still second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. This is a hand vote. All those in favor? Nine zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous number two. County, council to consider an interlocal agreement with Hamilton County concerning cost sharing on the East-West Corridor project. Skroski.
Mr. O'Connor already introduced this slightly earlier with finance committee. This is our long-awaited interlocal agreement with Hamilton County for the Pleasant Street Bridge over the White River. So originally, this, this interlocal was just going to be for phase one. It is now for the entire project, so it extends over all three phases of the project. It commits the county to eighteen million dollars in construction and inspection costs towards the White River Bridge. All other phases of the project will be under the city's responsibility to, for construction and inspection. In return for their commitment, for our commitment to finish the rest of the project with our funding, they have agreed to give us the eight and a half million dollars that we've already received from the MPO of state funding, and then any future funding that we receive from the state or the federal government for all future phases, whether on a bridge or for the roadway, would go towards the city's cost portion of this project. This project is still set to be bid in September of this year. It has been signed by the commissioners. Hopefully, it will be signed by you guys tonight, and then we'll go to the county council next week for signature. It also just describes the maintenance responsibilities for the White River Bridge and then outside of the White River Bridge, and that is consistent between all of our other interlocal agreements that we've had with Hamilton County in the past when there's a bridge involved in the project. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions of Ms. Skroski?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Ally, you might, just for everybody's benefit, phase one, phase two.
Yes.
Phase three, those can, that consists of everything from, what, nineteenth?
So phase one...
But you might just...
Yes. Real quickly, I'll go over that. Yes. Phase one is the one that I said will be bid this year, and it extends from River Road, just west of River Road, all the way to Eleventh Street in downtown Noblesville. Phase two will connect to that at Eleventh Street and go to Nineteenth Street where the post office is. And then phase three is from State Road Thirty-two, Hague Road, all the way to just west of River Road where it will tie into phase one. Phases two and three will be bid at the same time next year, in September of twenty-twenty-three. And so the entire project, phases one, two, and three, our goal is to have those complete by the end of twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a long time coming.
It is. Very exciting.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Hamilton County.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the interlocal agreement with Hamilton County. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Council to consider resolution RC thirty-two dash twenty-two. A resolution approving an economic development agreement with Patch W P B Lot A LLC regarding the construction of a two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-square-foot flex industrial building on Lot A in Washington Business Park. Mr. Murray.
Madam President, I have a conflict of interest on the next two items. Good evening. Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. This item before you, resolution RC thirty-two dash twenty-two, approves an economic development agreement with Patch Development for yet another investment in Washington Business Park. I do want to acknowledge Pat Chittenden, founder of Patch Development in U I N, in the back row. As a quick update on the park itself, since its conception about fifteen months ago, I'm proud to report that with this proposal before you, Washington Business Park will have over six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet of new building space. And with that building space, will produce more than eighty million dollars in committed investment. We've had numerous success, successful business retention and attraction wins, as announced. And lastly, the speed of this development has exceeded everyone's expectations, and it's going about three times faster than what we projected. So nevertheless, it has tremendous momentum, great return on our investment in the initial infrastructure to the park, and we would like to continue riding that wave of growth as much as possible. So with the item before you, with this approval, it will help facilitate the construction of a second speculative flex industrial building on Lot A, totaling two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand square feet on this sixteen-acre parcel of land. You'll note in the agreement, it also includes a commitment from the developer to make a minimum investment of twenty-six million dollars in real property improvements. We like this project. It adds to our building space inventory in the park that will help us meet that speed to market demand for immediate space. As I'm sure you all are aware, Lot One is under construction. This is the one hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-square footer that is about seventy percent leased up right now. And so the space is necessary to continue to build out. What's our role in this partnership? We're going to invest in this project through a tax abatement offering. As this council knows, economic development is a highly competitive opportunity, and by offering this abatement will allow the city to better position itself to compete for projects, the right projects, I will add, to locate to Washington Business Park and to our community. So procedurally speaking, we did vet this last week with this council's finance committee, and it does come to you with favorable support. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Mr. Murray?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve resolution RC dash thirty-two dash twenty-two as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC dash thirty-two dash twenty-two. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any nays or abstentions? So eight in favor, one abstention. Thank you very much. Council to consider resolution RC dash thirty-three dash twenty-two. A resolution approving certain tax abatement deductions for Patch W P B Lot A LLC regarding the construction of a two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-square-foot flex industrial building in Lot A in Washington Business Park. Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Sticking with the same project as just discussed, this resolution before you is the authorizing resolution to formally approve the tax abatement deduction pursuant to the economic development agreement that you personally approved. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move we approve RC dash thirty-three dash twenty-two as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC dash thirty-three dash twenty-two as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any abstentions? Eight in favor, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council to consider resolution RC dash thirty-four dash twenty-two. A resolution concerning tax abatement compliance. Amy Smith.
Good evening. This resolution is for the approval of the annual compliance forms for real and personal property tax abatements. Each year, a business with an active abatement is required to submit a C F one compliance form to both the city and Hamilton County. These compliance forms are reviewed for compliance with the S B one form and presented to this body. Just a few things to highlight. Overall, there are forty-one tax abatements, twenty-nine real property, and twelve personal property abatements. Of the forty-one, nine will fall off after this year. And the concluding recommendation is written in this resolution is that we have compliance with all outstanding abatement recipients. Under this administration, the council may recall a new requirement for abatement recipients to demonstrate to the city their engagement with, as a community partner. This engagement can include financial contributions, volunteerism, or participating in social, cultural, and civic events within the city. Some of the activities the recipients participate in over the past year include closing businesses early as an, for the afternoon, sorry, and assisting with setup for the distribution of free Thanksgiving meals, helping with the setup for Christmas assistance distribution that takes place at the fairgrounds, and also participating with Noblesville schools in a variety of ways, including serving on the high school project lead-the-way advisory board, assisting with product review and evaluation for the senior engineering projects, and coaching and mentoring. We look forward to hearing all the ways recipients continue to engage with the community, and will continue to report this to you annually. In closing, I ask for your approval of the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Smith?
I just want to say, I think this is a lot of work, and I know last year, last couple of years, they've come in late because of COVID and some shutdowns, and I appreciate that they're all here and ready to go. So thank you for your hard work.
Thanks.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Peterson, be me to the pod. There's a lot of work involved in this, and I appreciate all that, and it's going to get more, it will, it will get more voluminous, which is a good thing. Ultimately, it pays off for the taxpayers, but thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
So with that, I would make a motion to approve RC dash thirty-four dash twenty-two as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC dash thirty-four dash twenty-two as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Previously discussed ordinances... Previously discussed ordinances continue. Council to consider ordinance number 37-06-22, an ordinance for the change of zoning from R2 low to moderate density single-family to R5 multifamily residential for property in the 19100 to 19400 blocks of Allisonville Road, West Side in Noblesville Township. As well as council to consider ordinance number 38-06-22, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential to R5-FH/PD-GUO multifamily residential flood hazard plan development with a government use overlay, including adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers for property in the 19100 to 19400 blocks of Allisonville Road, West Side of Noblesville Township. Ms. Ashen.
Good evening. I did a lot of speaking last meeting, so I'm going to try to keep my comments brief. Just a reminder, staff gave this item a neutral recommendation to Plan Commission. Plan Commission did forward with a do not adopt recommendation. I have talked to several council people over the last week individually with some comments they had following the presentations. The biggest one that I think I will address publicly is the noise ordinance question. So this particular property is actually located in Noblesville Township. The Noblesville City Code noise ordinance applies only to properties and city limits. So this property would be subject to the Hamilton County noise ordinance. There was also some discussion about trucks operating on the street violating that. There is actually an exemption in Noblesville City Code noise ordinance that says vehicles that are properly muffled and driving on a street are exempt unless they have a violation such as a stereo system that does violate the ordinance requirement. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none. And does the petitioner have any new information to present?
This is Eric Dowth, on behalf of petitioner, walk up.
Please keep in mind that this would be new information. Thank you.
Eric Dowth, on behalf of petitioner, I have no new information to present tonight, but I'll be happy to make any comments if we have any additional public comments that need to be addressed, or if you have any questions that I can answer on your behalf here tonight.
Any questions to Mr. Dowth at this time? I have three comment cards. The first one is Rachel Reimer. Please come forward and state your name and address. And you have a three-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Rachel Reimer. I live at 18915 Fairfield Boulevard. Apologies if I cough a little bit. I've been joking, it's my Batman voice, but this is only going to be 30 seconds, so I'm not going to waste your time. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we've had an additional 204 petition signatures against this proposal. Given that the community has been very passionate about this issue, I just want to thank you all for your time and your patience in hearing either over the phone or via numerous emails, all the concerns that the community has. We recognize that effort. That being said, the community, both here and online, is looking forward to how you all will represent your constituents' voices in your forthcoming vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Candace Knoll. For Knoll? Knoll.
Please state my address. 10777 Riverwood Avenue, Noblesville. I live on Residence One, mile from Potter's Bridge. That's 1886 Residence that has the story of our town that many have told us is important to them. So our family are placeholders in history. And 100 years from now, we want to share with other people what we're doing with our home and what happened in Noblesville. Is this an okay time to ask questions about the project that haven't been asked? Such as, my business that I operate from my residence is in a floodplain. And I wonder what the historical, what the precedents will be in the future for floodplain rezoning. Such as, I'm not allowed to put a fence on my property because there's a polka dot in the floodplain. So I just have questions and concerns about a mining operation at Potter's Bridge being the only option for sand and gravel mining in the area as it affects the floodplain. May I continue with a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay. Would the, have you been convinced by historical case study or scientific research that mining in this close proximity to the river is not going to affect drinking water quality? I haven't heard that yet in the presentations. And how would an upstream monitoring well judge water quality downstream from the operation, because the river flows downstream? Would the concerns like human health and water health, air quality, wildlife dispersal become a constant headache for our community and the Beaver Company and officials to deal with? Is the Parks Department, who they can afford, which we've heard, another area for pond fishing location? Could they be able to find that in a different location that wouldn't possibly affect all these qualities of both quality of enjoyment in our community and possible water and air and wildlife issues? And what issues, since I'm not allowed to build a fence on my property that just has one polka dot of a floodplain in it? What issues would happen if we built up a floodplain and built housing on it? Would there be better locations for the housing? Would choosing to mine, then build a lake, then housing unalterably remove the peace and quiet and environmental safety of this area? We've preserved areas like the courthouse and the sidewalks. I think this rezoning request would devalue the quality of life and of the park and the surrounding schools and residencies. And I believe that the most practical and noble decision would be to protect this gem of the covered bridge since it is our last in Hamilton County. As a business owner, I understand having dreams to filling a gap, but I understand sometimes they don't work out. And I would hope that we could find a different area to find gravel in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one I have is Richard Gothray. I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly. Is Richard still here? All right. Okay. So Mr. Dowth, if you would like to respond, you may.
Eric Dowth, 2 North 9th Street here in Noblesville, Indiana. First of all, I want to say thank you. Your job is hard. I'm appreciative of the time and effort that you guys put in up there. Very few people understand how much time it takes to sit on that side. I have a slight idea. I'm appreciative of that. I'm not going to go into specific details about what was brought up today. Other than the report that in the six inches of information you've got, each and every factual question that's been raised has been addressed. I think there's a little bit of, among those is the fact that in the survey that we completed of the respondents, 60% of those were in favor of this park. Now, it is very difficult for people who are in favor of folks to come to these kinds of events, as you know. You tend to hear people who are against it. But the one thing I want to emphasize is this is about a park. It is not about a gravel operation. This is not an economic windfall for Beaver. This is a charitable donation that's being made by Beaver. If we don't vote for this, we as the citizens of Hamilton County are going to lose an opportunity to make a real decision that benefits all of us. You're going to get a whole bunch of negative emails and a whole bunch of telephone calls that I don't envy over the next six months if you vote in favor of this park. I understand that. Your job is hard. I appreciate that. But after six months, those emails will dissipate. And this park will be here six months, six years, and six decades from now. You have a real opportunity to make a very hard decision that benefits me and my family and all the citizens of Hamilton County going forward. It's a hard decision. I appreciate that. But I hope that you're able to take the long-term view and reach the decision that this park and this location is what's best for all of us. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate your consideration. And I appreciate all the emails and telephone calls you've received and will continue to receive, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hughes.
Madam President, I'm sure the board may have some other items you want to discuss or questions you want to ask. But just for clarification, the procedure of what we're hearing on tonight and what your votes would mean. So there are two ordinances for your review. As is typical, a motion to approve those ordinances in order. The motion to approve, and this is why I want to explain this a little bit, this did come forward with an unfavorable recommendation. But the ordinance before you would be to approve the project. So a motion to approve the ordinance would be we are in favor of the project moving forward as presented. There is a little peculiarity in the law in terms of if there was a decision not to approve, and we can address that after that motion were made. But the appropriate motion at this time would be a motion to approve and then to determine how the board feels about that motion.
And we can read both and vote on both ordinances together?
Yes, ma'am. I don't believe there's any amendments, so we can do both at the same time.
Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, madam. First off, I just want to thank everyone for coming out, for voicing their concerns. We've had quite a few different things during my tenure on the council that have not come out well, and they've been very ugly. And I've seen everyone from both Mr. Beaver's side and from the citizen's side. Other than a few off-color emails, the majority of everything's been very respectful on both sides, and that's how government should work. And I just want to thank everybody. And I know everybody up here on the council likes that because it gets ugly a lot. And I know you guys are passionate about it, but you were very kind, and I appreciate that. I don't normally talk about how I'm going to vote, but yet I want my three minutes as a Noblesville citizen, so I'm going to talk a little bit about how I'm feeling about this. So you can start the clock. No, there's, I do believe that there's a very good chance that if this moved forward, that we have, all of us in this room who've got a lot of concerns, it probably wouldn't come to fruition. It wouldn't be nearly as bad as what we think about. I talked to tons of Lockhaven citizens who live in Lockhaven right next to those wells that say that it's not very loud, that there's no dust problems, that there's not anything, and then in five years, we'd have a great park. But it isn't just that cut and dry, I know. It's very scary. I do have some fears, and those make it so it's not just a cut and dry thing. I really worry about the water table. I know we've had some water table issues over by Lockhaven, and I worry about that. I don't worry about the drinking water, but I do have some other things about it. And I worry that the water company is kind of putting it on the city to police it. And no offense, Mr. Mayor, but we're not exactly a community that's ready to start policing drilling and some of that kind of stuff. That's not what we're good at, I don't think. And so I've got some concerns with some of that. So I mentioned on the way in here to some very nice citizens that it's not cut and dry. This is definitely a gray one, I feel like, where there's not a yes or a no or a good or bad. And I think that's really weighed on a lot of people. So with that, then what I have to do is I have to go back and do a lot more research. And one of the things I do is look at the committees and the people that came to and brought this to me. When I see the planning commission was unfavorable, the mayor's administration was neutral, and the water company was at best neutral, if not against it, then I feel like even though I have the ability to personally vote away from the way that all of them motion toward me to go, I have to really have to feel strongly about something in order to go against that. And so I don't think I feel strong enough about this either way to go against that, so I'm just going to follow those. But I certainly am not going to urge anyone else up here who has strong feelings either way. But I did want to say, that's kind of how I'm feeling on this, is it's very gray. But the biggest thing I do want to mention while I'm here is just thank you very much to everyone for standing above board, staying respectful and kind on both sides. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eric.
I'll kind of echo a little bit of what Mark said. I think in 18 and a half years, I've served on the council. It's maybe one of the toughest decisions I've had to make. I built the last house at Green Valley and the first house in Potter's Woods. I've lived in the area for 16, 17 years, so I'm very familiar with it. I feel like this project has a lot going from the county side. I wish it could have been sold probably better to the city side. It lacks a lot of things at this point. It doesn't meet the comprehensive master plan, which we know can be changed. It didn't gain administration approval or backing. It didn't gain planning department backing. And it also is sent to us with a negative recommendation from the plan commission. And that just makes it awful hard for me to make a decision to vote for it.
Anyone else?
Madam President, I would echo some of the comments my colleague just made. I think this, in my 14 and a half years, is one of the more challenging votes that we've had to make. There's a lot of good reasons for looking at the future. How much parkland are we going to need? The city continues to grow. It's 70,000 people now. It's going to approach 100,000 people. County residents are going to look for parkland. We have a beautiful park, a forest park, and we've got some other city parks that are well-established and used quite frequently, frankly. This isn't easy because you look at what's happened over on River Road. You look at water quality. I don't think we've had any issues with water quality. And there's a number of mining pits there, and there hasn't been any real issues. There's been millions of gallons of water pumped out of there on a daily basis. So I don't think water quality, some of the risks that were brought up, I think they've been addressed and identified. And we're trying to activate the river, so this park will allow us to do that. And the county is a big part of that. So this is really difficult. I mean, you want to be respectful, and I think everybody has. I want to thank everybody for doing that. I mean, to Mr. Boyce's point, I think there were a couple of off-color emails. But for the most part, everybody that's been here has stated their position well and given us the opportunity to weigh this. But when it comes down to looking at, how do you make a decision? You almost have to go to the Ben Franklin T chart and try to figure out the pros and cons and then make a decision. But this is something that, you know, you look at it long-term. If it's approved, you'd have a park there. It'll be there for a number of years. And the county has committed to fund and make sure that it gets completed. So I think for the next generation of residents, it can be quite an amenity. So with that, I'll turn it back to Madam President.
Mr. Peterson.
I have been on here as long as some other people, but this is the hardest decision I've had to make. And I don't want to lose sight of the fact that I think this is a great idea. The reclamation of any industrial site is something that we need to consider going forward in the future. And I wish the Beaver family had been in the tire business, for example. But I think that this is, there's nothing about this project that if it is denied as a gravel pit, that it can still be a park. And I think we just heard that our major number one, two, and three project in Noblesville is going to be done in two years. And it's significantly larger than this. And I just can't imagine how loss of peaceful enjoyment of this property for a long period of time, I'm still unclear how long, is really worth the incremental gain of this parkland. It could be somewhere else. It could be a different use. It could take the time to be designed to meet more of a city service need, a deficiency need, rather than the reclamation of, I don't think it'd take away his aesthetic for this park, if it does continue to be a park. And this is a tough decision because I think it's a great idea. I just think it's-
Anyone else? I will say that I appreciate Mr. Beaver and the Beaver family wanting to do things for the benefit of the community. And I can completely understand the county's excitement and enthusiasm to gain new park ground and be willing to donate. But I don't believe that this is the right site for a mining operation. I agree with Mr. Peterson that if it can be a park and be expanded, that would be fabulous. Do we have a motion?
Madam President, you're going to need a motion. So I'll move to approve ordinance 3706.2 and 3806.22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinances number 37-06-22 and number 38-06-22. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sparks? That's not an option, I'm sorry.
But, no.
Mr. Air?
Nay.
Mr. Boyce?
Nay.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
Nay.
Ms. Wiles?
Nay.
Two aye, seven nay, and that is a negative vote.
Yeah, so the ordinances fail. This leaves us in a unique situation where it would be appropriate, under the statute at this point, for the board to take a formal vote to reject the application, given that we had a majority of noes. That would be clear to everyone tonight that the application fails tonight, and then the year, time period, if they were wanting to refile it sometime in the future, that would be clear that that start, that is tonight, and everyone can know we have a clear vote. So that would be a motion to reject, and then obviously, when you make a motion to reject, an aye vote would be in favor of rejection, a no vote would be that you would prefer not to reject the application.
We think we've got it.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to reject ordinances number 37-06-22 and number 38-06-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to reject ordinances number 37-06-22 and number 38-06-22. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees? Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks votes to reject. Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Air votes to reject. Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce votes to reject. Mr. Davis?
Nay.
Mr. Davis does not vote to reject. Mr. O'Connor?
Nay.
Mr. O'Connor does not vote to reject. Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson votes to reject. Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz votes to reject. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes to reject. Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles votes to reject. So that's seven aye in favor of rejection to nay, not in favor of rejection. The ordinances are rejected. Thank you all very much for your civil discussion and participation in this whole process. We know that this has been very hard, so. That is the last item to vote on in this evening's meeting. Are there any council comments?
Just to make sure people come out for the Fourth of July, the mayor did a nice job of explaining that, but that'll be a very nice activity, so make sure you make your plans accordingly, and we'll be full of house.
Just like Mr. Air always says, if you can't find something to do in downtown Noblesville on the weekend, then you're not looking hard enough, so there won't be lots of activities this weekend for the celebration of our independence. Anyone else?
Nope.
We are adjourned.